Good afternoon. The time is now 1:18 PM and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of March 10, 2020 is called to order. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There are. I have two forms. Anybody else have a form? I'll review the rules for public comment. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to address the board. You will be seated at the end of the board table. If you have handouts, please pass them to the person closest to you at the table. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. However, you may be contacted after the board meeting. Public participation guidelines say that I must have the forms before we begin. We'll maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people, and disrespecting anyone by name will be gavelled down and asked to cease. We will be strictly following the time slots. And our first speaker is Teri Pettit, and she will be followed by Bob Wright.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I thought it was probably time that I really formally introduce myself since I'm at all of your meetings and looking at your heads all the time. So I appreciate you letting me be here today. I am the facilitator for SEAC, which is the Special Education Advisory Committee to, actually, to the board. One of our mandated responsibilities is to advise you in areas of special education. We also collaborate with the Office of Special Education here at the department and with the Michigan Department of Education. So I am just very glad to be here, and I'm here for a specific reason. I think you've already seen the document that's going around right now, but at the end of last month's meeting, Michelle Fecto just briefly mentioned that it would be nice if SEAC could weigh in on Senate Bill 567. Am I getting that right? Okay.
Close enough.
Okay. Right, right. Okay. So anyway, what we did was our meeting of SEAC was last week, and that particular meeting, we have 74 members right now, and that includes 51% of which are parents or people with disabilities themselves. And then we also have administrators, service providers, advocates, consumers, all concerned with the education of children with disabilities in the state of Michigan. So we decided to hold a meeting to discuss the Senate Bill 657 and see how our group felt about it. Well, because we represent so many groups here in Michigan, of course, it was going to be a pro and con. If I split, if I had split the group in half and said, "Okay, parents, how do you feel?" We all know how the parents would have felt, or I could have guessed how the parents would have felt. But then the other 50 or 49% of that group, if we had split it in half, half would have been opposed and half would have been for it. And they would have to follow what their organization that they're representing believes. So it was a very interesting day. I had to try and figure out how I was going to navigate those waters and keep everybody still playing nicely in the sandbox, and it really was a very, very productive day. We had several people that came and spoke with us and shared their opinions about the bill or gave us more information about the bill. You all know Caroline Leith, and she came in and spoke with us about where the bill stood at that time. It had just passed out of the Senate Education Committee, had just passed it, and it had been moved to the floor. So she shared with us that that had happened. Dr. Kishnecht was with us for the day to share, or in the morning, to share with us about the Path Forward work, but he was also asked some questions about this particular bill. So having him there was helpful so he could share the Department of Education's opinion about the bill. Liz Bauer, you probably remember Liz as a former State Board of Education member. She came early that morning and stayed right until the very end of the day and helped us with everything and had a lot to say to our group as well. Senator Dana Pulihanki came and shared her opposition to the bill. She was one of two senators that voted against it, although she probably will be inclined to vote for it when it hits the floor vote tomorrow. We also heard from Michelle Fecto, because she always stands up for our special education students and populations and keeps reminding us that you folks care about that population of students. Peter Spatafor came from the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators. Kathleen Moore represented the Michigan Association of School Boards. And then Teri Chapman was asked to weigh in just at the end of the day to explain a little bit more about how our current system works. So she did share some of that. Because of the diversity of our membership, like I said, I didn't want to have the pros and cons, but what I wanted to do was to ask them, whether you believe in this strongly or you just totally hate this bill, what recommendations would you give to the State Board of Education? Because that's their purpose in being there. I'm not going to read all of that to you. I know that Michelle has shared this paper with you already, but I just wanted to say that the group was thrilled, thrilled, because they felt like they finally understood their purpose. This is what we're here for, was to advise the State Board of Education. So the members were very dynamically and robustly invested in getting something to you that would reflect the recommendations of our group. So I thank you very much for letting me speak. It's nice to finally meet all of you. I've met most of you, but all of you know, and thank you very much.
Our final speaker is Bob Wright.
I was thinking about, this is the fourth time that I've spoken before the board over the last four years, and I've realized the reason I do it is because of health and safety. I put that together. And so this is interesting. So on my way up this morning, I tuned into your broadcast that you have live. I'm probably one of the 50,000 that are watching today. Because I wanted to, I like to hear, I've done that a few times, you know, just to hear what's going on in Michigan. And one thing that I picked up was you mentioned about the health and safety. That's the most important thing that we can do for kids. And I think it was you, Lupe, that said, "I heard your voice, but I wasn't sure. That can be an overwhelming task." And you don't even know how much more you can do, because is it really doing good to be able to have so much on your plate that you have to do just educational-wise? So as I was thinking about this, like, wow, I'm going to be talking about health and safety today. So I didn't even know you guys were thinking about doing that, which is cool. Anyway, so my ask is, as you do that process, it seems to me like there is a gap that would be helpful to address, and it's, I mean, you have so many areas that you want to, literacy and food safety and home safety, abuse at school, bullying, all that kind of stuff. One thing that is a charge issue that I think sometimes either is overemphasized or underemphasized is gun safety. And a lot of kids are around guns accidentally or intentionally, and they don't always know what to do when they run into, I read recently in a study, 400 million guns in America, and that is going up 20 million a year. And so it's a real issue, you know? We have lots of, but what are we doing as a community? I know from my perspective as a parent, I have five kids, they're all grown. I took that responsibility seriously, and I made sure that, you know, I had safety in my home. There's another statistic that I read about not too long ago, 85% of gun owners are not storing their guns correctly. 85%. And so I felt good that I'm one of the 15% that is, and then I've used guns responsibly. It's a right, but it's also responsibility, and you have to do that well. Anyway, when I was a kid, I was 13 when I went to my first gun safety class, and I got to bring my shotgun to school, which would never happen today, but I learned how to respect. You know, there's gun fear and there's gun respect. And I think that too often, our culture has moved to the gun fear aspect, and I think there needs to be a balance in that. And obviously, you know, this is a charge issue, I get that. But there are some simple things that could be done. One of them, a few things, there's a, the Brady Organization has come up with it, it's called ASK, and it's called, it says Asking Safe Kids. And it's a once-a-year thing, June 21st, and they just say, "Ask this question. Are your guns safe?" And ask your kids to ask that question when they go to their friends' homes or a party or, "Where are you going?" Ask that question. Are your guns, it's not to shame, it's to inform, it's to educate, it's to bring awareness. One simple thing that could be added, you know, do you celebrate Ask Day? You know, on June 21st, you're out of school, but, I mean, you could do your own thing. Another thing is like more of an educational program, is the NRA has Eddie the Eagle Program, and they ask four questions. And they're simply, when you come up to a gun that you don't know about, what do you do? Stop, you know? And eventually, don't touch it, talk to an adult, leave it alone. The problem with that is, when kids are actually put in that situation, the research shows that it doesn't always translate, even though they know what they're supposed to do, because the aura of guns and the, you know, they don't always know what to do with that in the moment. But if we're not doing anything, we're not giving them any tools. The other problem is that parents are really the issue often, and they think their kids are protected because they have information when they don't. And so the parents aren't as concerned about their, because they have this, "Oh, my kids are protected, my kids are safe." So whatever you guys do when you talk about this area, I think is really important to have the discussion. And you don't want it to be charged because there are going to be some politically that go on one side or the other, you know, gun control or gun advocacy. It's a right. You know, we need to deal with what's real and then come up with good solutions to educate our children what to do to protect themselves and others in that area. So thank you for what you're doing, and I appreciate the opportunity. My kids are safe, and I want all your kids to be safe, too. Thanks so much.
That concludes public participation.
Thank you very much. We have before us a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee, the whole meeting of February 11, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by our president, seconded by Ms. Ramos Montini. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. President Albridge, your report.
Are we doing?
No.
That's not part of my report.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just very briefly, this month, first of all, as you saw earlier today, we are celebrating March as Reading Month, and so just encouraging people to get out and read to kids this month. It's also Women's History Month, so you could do a twofer and read a story about some fantastic women, either in history or today. So that is March. Today is also Election Day, so don't forget to get out and vote. It is the presidential primary on the Democratic side, but there's also a vast number of ballot questions that are also on the ballot. So whether you are a Democrat or not, it's still a good idea to show up at the polls and vote, because you might have some tax questions.
Republican primary, too.
Hmm?
Republican primary, too.
Oh. It's a Republican primary.
You could write Tom in.
Not Republican.
Oh, I guess there is.
Yeah, it is presidential.
What's his name?
There's that guy.
There's like three on there.
I don't know.
I didn't think there was others running in Michigan on the Republican side, so that's good to know. So regardless of what your party affiliation is, today's a good day to go out and vote. I think we're all kind of dealing right now with the coronavirus, and it's nice to see that the state is taking the lead on pulling together a group to work on that, and their local school districts are working on that as well. I can tell you from the university perspectives, we're all taking this very seriously and identifying ways that if we need to, we can also be part of the solution for coronavirus. And just today, we found out that NASB is canceling their legislative conference, which was scheduled from March 22nd through the 24th. I was also supposed to take part in a public education forum in Philadelphia at the end of this month, and I just found out that that, too, is being rescheduled. So if you have travel scheduled, chances are, it probably may not be going through. But just a couple of updates there. And then finally, I taped an interview with Channel 7, and they ran a segment a couple weeks ago that highlighted an issue with charter schools and lease agreements and things like that. Just a reminder, back in 2013 and 2014, this board had come up with several recommendations, legislative recommendations, that would have actually addressed the issue that Channel 7 was highlighting. And so here we are, you know, eight years later, and we're still dealing with some of these issues. So it might be time for us to revisit those and see if we might want to, since most of the legislature has switched over in that time period, so it would be all new individuals, we might want to dust those off and take a look at them and see if it's something that we would still make a recommendation to the legislature regarding. And I will ask Marilyn to send those out so that you are aware. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Report of State Superintendent is brief. March is Reading Month. I enjoyed reading to the kids in Harper Creek or vice versa, depending upon your perspective, last week. I will be in Flint and Benton Harbor this month as well, and I welcome any State Board member who would like to come and read with me or to me or for me during those moments. I would like to congratulate the Papa School Board on retiring its mascot.
Yay!
I would like to wish the Flint Community Schools good luck as it seeks to stabilize financially. A piece of that effort is taking place today in two local ballot initiatives. I have asked Dr. Bill Pearson to come back by popular demand. He was so good in the morning show that we wanted him to come back and share with us briefly where we are with the Community Engagement Advisory Committee for the Benton Harbor Area Schools. Our board is very interested in what's going on in Benton Harbor to strengthen the schools there. Dr. Pearson.
Okay, quick summary. We started October 30th, and eight or nine people represented from the business community, teachers' union, ministerial alliance, and so forth. So we met once a month, the first Monday of each month, and then subcommittees were formed, and different members of the community were involved in each subcommittee. For example, the academic committee that I chaired, we had a student and a parent, and assistant superintendent, somebody from the ISD, so every subcommittee had different members. So they've met about seven times, probably the subcommittees did. And then the assessment piece was completed first, and that assessment piece for each of the four subcommittees was completed by January 31st. There's a Community Engagement Committee, Academics and Programs, Budget and Finance, and then Building and Facilities. And then in the month of February, we began to work on our recommendations, each subcommittee did. And so what we did is the Treasury representatives met with the subcommittee chairs to go over what it means to recommend and what type of recommendations could be utilized. Then we had two weeks to complete the recommendations, but the recommendations were always a part of the conversation when we were doing the assessment for each subcommittee. And then Treasury met on February 18th with the subcommittee chairs to review the recommendations thus far, and everybody provided comments. And then the chairs went back to their subcommittees for two more weeks to finalize the recommendations, and then they were placed in the hands of Treasury and Committee. And from there, we are going to present on next Tuesday, on March 17th, at 5:30, at Benton Harbor High School. Hasn't been determined if it's a library or the cafeteria. I'm pushing for the cafeteria. The presentation will be made to the Board of Education for Benton Harbor, and then the document will be provided. Then on Thursday next week, the document, it's about 145 pages, will be provided to Treasury and MDE. And then the following week, March 24th, at two different times, noon and 5:30, the report will be presented to the community. So the community will have two opportunities to hear it. And each time it's presented, the report, whoever's in attendance can make comments, suggestions, whether written or verbal, and then those comments and suggestions will be brought back to the committee. And then, I don't know if the subcommittees will be brought back or just the chairs, and then if any changes are made, those changes will be made. And then the final report will be presented to the original committee, the eight-member committee, on April 13th, Monday night. And then at that point, there'll probably be a resolution, and then the resolution for the committee, they'll vote on that, and then it will be provided to the board to decide what they want to do in the new superintendent. They have a new superintendent. They started February 17th?
17th. February 17th. I was there four days later.
Yeah.
And he's got a heavy lift. It's a challenging position, and we're trying to give him the maximum amount of support we can, recognizing that it is a local control state on the one hand, but recognizing also that the challenges of Benton Harbor did not originate in Benton Harbor and don't have their solutions solely in Benton Harbor. Other...
Be superintendent also, so I hope, you know, they'll be able to work together to provide a lot of opportunities for that district to grow, put their systems in place, and increase achievement. It's going to be a tough road to complete, but I think this report, I know the superintendent is, he wants to get that report in his hands so that we can then work on, I shouldn't say "we," so the district can work on a strategic plan to move into a place where good things will happen in Benton Harbor.
Thank you. Ms. Ramos Montini.
Can you tell us a little bit about who the superintendent is and a little bit about his background?
Sure. Dr. Andre Townsell is the new superintendent. He most recently worked as an assistant superintendent in Wayne Westland on the east side of the state. Prior to that, he was a principal in Massachusetts. He is young, he is eager, he is smart, and he has us all hopping to help support him in his mission of serving 1,700 young people in Benton Harbor Area Schools. I had the opportunity to meet him in January at the MASA Conference in Detroit, was in touch with him most recently this morning. Yes, Ms. Dilly.
What was the process they used?
To select a new superintendent? They had a search consultant. They put out a request for applications. People applied, they interviewed. He was the top candidate. He was one of two finalists, along with an internal, Patricia Robinson, Patricia Robinson, who had been the interim superintendent there upon the departure of the CEO, Robert Herrera. Yes.
I know that the enrollment declined significantly this school year. Do you have the numbers?
You know what? The last number I heard was 1,744. I cannot confirm that at this moment. I can confirm it before this meeting is over, but that was the last number that I heard when I was in Benton Harbor on the 21st.
What was it last school year?
I do not know.
About 1950.
Do you believe that it was a decline of about 200? Okay, thank you.
And what about, do you know about the high school specifically, what the decline was there?
I do not know.
How has this, or how is it going to impact the district?
The finite number of students? It don't impact it financially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that, but do we know any projections of the ramifications?
I don't know about the ramifications. I know that the budget projections, they're projecting that in seven years, if, when the number they have, I think it's 15-something that they think it'll bottom out at, and so they believe that they'll be out of general fund deficit in seven years.
The district has declined in enrollment over a period of years, like many urbans in the state, not all, but many. And the hope is that this SEAC plan will be part of what pulls the district out of that decline in enrollment, restabilizes the district. But as I've said repeatedly, I respect the process in Benton Harbor enormously and the partners that have come to the table. But Benton Harbor didn't create its own challenges, and it's not responsible for addressing those challenges uniquely. We have to all be a part of that, and I know you agree with that.
Yes. So we don't anticipate that any of the schools, that there will be closures from the decline in enrollment upcoming year?
I can't speak to that, and I think that would jump the report. The report's coming out in a few weeks, and I don't want us to necessarily jump the report. I can tell you that they have six active school buildings. They have many more buildings, but that they have six buildings in use currently as schools. They have a pre-K, a 1-3, a 4-5, a 6-8, a high school, and an alternative high school, Dream Academy. And typically, school districts with 1,744 children do not have six schools. Other questions? Más preguntas. Dr. Pugh.
I get what Tiffany is getting at, is that, you know, and hopefully, we're moving away from this, and it has looked promising, but, you know, we brought this up during the big peak of the Benton Harbor issue, is that we know that there's destruction when we talk about the school closures, and then we have parents that pull their kids and put them elsewhere, then that helps to fulfill that, moves them closer to closing, because then you have a bigger fiscal issue. And we've seen that across the state, and it's unfortunate that that has happened again and again. I think that one of the things with the board, with the board, a local board, being able to hire the superintendent, it has been really refreshing, it was refreshing to see that, that they were able to select their own superintendent, which was a huge part of that whole debacle. But then also to see how the community is embracing the superintendent. So I just hope that that continues, and it's good to hear that he's being supported in a way that it looks like that can happen. But that's huge, you know, for that community to be able to have their, utilize a democratic process, to be able to select who it is they want it to be over their children. And then my question is, for this advisory board, how many members, what's the representation of like the school board? What's the school board's input beyond them just giving a presentation and being able to give input at that point?
There was one school board member that was on the advisory board.
And then what, and can you tell me what the board, you might have mentioned this, and maybe I missed it, how is, what's the composition of the board?
The advisory board? Ministerial Alliance person, a community member, a representative from the, two representatives from the community. One is a consultant that some of the board members knew and was a past president of a university. Treasury, Joyce Parker, is the chairperson. I was on it representing MDE. There was a parent, a student.
A teacher.
And there's one other one.
Teacher?
Yeah. I sit next to her every time, I love her. Teacher Union President Brenda was on there also. Thank you.
Okay. And then hopefully, are we seeing like the back and forth where they're able to take this information to their, the groups that they represent, and so it won't be like surprising whatever is unveiled in the report when you take it to the board and to the community?
I believe that happened, but, you know, I don't know that. I believe that happened, but, you know, I don't know that.
It is important ultimately that there be an embracing of a path forward, and it doesn't have to be perfectly, this report per se, but ultimately, this committee is of short duration, the board is of longer duration.
Right.
And so I think that's where you're coming from. And at some point, you have to hand it off to the duly-elected representatives of the community, and it should represent, the board, as I understand it, is going to have to approve the plan. Is that right?
Okay.
They have to accept it, approve it, yes. And that should be done by resolution. So, you know, hopefully that will occur, and they have a few weeks to, you know, look it over after it's finally completed on April 13th, when the advisory board finally has a, you know, motion to determine that we're ready to hand it off to the board, and then the board will have a decision to make.
The board, the board is one of three signatories ultimately.
Right.
The board, the Department of Treasury, Department of Education. Other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Specko.
Yeah, in the discussions and the subcommittees, are there discussions around, also around the special education services? I know that we had gotten a request from MPAS to make sure that the advisory group had somebody with expertise in that area so they wouldn't be overlooked. So I'm just wondering if there's been any focus on that group.
There was discussion, there was, you know, with regard to the subcommittee for academics and programs. We didn't have anybody specifically that represented just the special ed, special need students, but we did have, you know, ISD represented, who then would go back and ask questions, you know, myself who have been a superintendent, and the assistant superintendent, who was the interim superintendent at the time, was on the subcommittee. So there was a lot of, you know, people that had information and that could talk about special education.
My understanding was they had a huge amount of long-term subs in their, in that group. Is there a strategy to deal with that? Is that something that's?
There is a real shortage in our state with regard to, you know, specifically, you know, special education teachers. So Benton Harbor is experiencing that to the nth degree compared to other districts. So the strategy they can use for that, I'm not sure what it will be. It's very difficult to find special education teachers.
And if I could broaden it beyond special education teachers, because while you're absolutely right about the need for special education teachers, they are struggling with math teachers, they are struggling with science teachers. The issue of long-term subs at particularly the high school is significant, and this is wrapped up not solely associated with funding, but it is in part associated with funding, because you can only hire what you can afford. And so there are marketplace issues here, and that's why I say the resolution of Benton Harbor's challenges does not solely reside in Benton Harbor. And I'm going to, I'm going to keep putting it out there, so I want to be clear. Benton Harbor did not create all of its challenges, and it is not going to be able to resolve all of its challenges as well. Some of that has its genesis right here in the state capitol. Yes.
And I just have to say, that's a very powerful statement that you continue to make, because if we just rested and made it a Benton Harbor issue, then we would deal with Benton Harbor however we dealt with Benton Harbor, and then you would have Flint, Saginaw, Muskegon, Detroit, I mean, we would just be bouncing around. So appreciate that acknowledgement and hoping that the bigger state, or the full state recognizes that as well. Because if we don't, then we're going to be, just our schools are going to be, school districts are going to be dropping off one by one. So that's huge.
Thank you. And just for clarification purposes, I am referring to a school funding formula that is inadequate and inequitable.
And I'll just?
I just want to be, I just want to be real clear about it, because sometimes we get, we paint with too broad a brush, and I want to be clear what I'm referring to here. I'm referring to a state funding formula that is created in Lansing and can be rectified in Lansing. We need a weighted school funding formula. Different kids have different needs, different needs have different costs.
Yeah. And these are areas, the areas that we're talking about, Benton Harbor is so symbolic of that, because there's a bridge. You go right over the bridge, and you have just stark differences, and in this nation, one of the most economically segregated in the country. But still, the funding per pupil is equal. So we are definitely doing our children a disservice by not looking at our funding formula. And anybody, you don't have to know math to know that.
Anything more for Dr. Pierce? And anything more on the subject of Benton Harbor?
At some point, are we going to have them back to the table so they can give us an update and we can hear directly from them?
I think that would be a good idea. I think it would be a good idea to hear directly from our new superintendent from Benton Harbor and our board president from Benton Harbor. We'll reach out and we'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. You bet. Thank you. Thank you so much. And as if that weren't heavy enough, we did mention coronavirus. I can't resist. It is, it is on the news every single solitary day. We have a terrific partnership with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. We have put out an initial memo to schools and school districts. Kyle Garant is our point person on coronavirus, our deputy superintendent for finance and operations, and he's here to share an update. If you'd like to, if you'd like to come to the table and do it up, we welcome you. Thank you.
As Dr. Rice mentioned, we have a great partnership with our Health and Human Services Agency. We're in regular daily contact with the chief medical officer and others in the HHS stratosphere on this issue, as well as the governor's office. As you've heard, the governor activated the State Emergency Operations Center on February 28th as a response to coordinating the state's response to the coronavirus. As part of that activation, a week later, she also formed four separate task forces, one of which is focused specifically on education, both K-12 and higher ed, to focus on coordinating response and impacts in those spaces. The other three are state operations, Health and Human Services, and economy and workforce. So all four of those are groups have met once since their creation. The education one met this past Friday. There's a webinar from the chief state school officers that's happening on Thursday afternoon that a number of us here in the department are participating on, to, along with other state education agencies, to get an update from both those at the federal level and hear and learn from each other about responses in states as we respond to questions and concerns and guidance provided to schools. On the same day that Dr. Rice and Dr. Caldoon shared their joint memo, the CDC provided education-specific recommendations were published then, preliminary ones, so we've shared that as part of that memo, and the CDC has been updating that information, both for schools and other sectors of our, of our economy and throughout the country that are impacted by the virus, on almost a daily basis. Those of you who watch the news, see that it's a, it can be, it's a rapidly changing kind of landscape, and we're doing our best to work with our partners to continue keeping up with that, and then also communicate with schools. Dr. Rice wants to communicate with schools directly. Again, after our Thursday webinar, CCSO, just to provide an update on resources and any additional guidance that have been released since February 28th, since our last communication with schools.
Thank you. Questions, comments, thoughts?
Have we looked at the best practices? I can't remember if this was in the letter, but I know it was a question that we received directly around the testing. I can't remember if that was in the guidance to the, to the teachers or to the schools, if schools need, decide that they want to implement social distancing and close down the school or school district, you know, what are we looking at? Are we able to give any guidance on testing? Anything around pay for teachers or parapros or those who, you know, may have issue with that?
When you say testing, are you talking about not individuals being tested for the virus, but testing of students?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah.
Well, that piece, well, we can get to that later. I was talking about actual academic testing.
Those are, those are ongoing conversations as we speak. The initial letter that Dr. Rice and Dr. Caldoon sent was focused on preventative measures and did not address some of those issues. We have had multiple conversations and questions from the field, asking for specific guidance in some of those areas, and we're working to provide that. We have not given guidance about closure at this point, but are working on it, and was one of the main focuses of the task force meeting on Friday, both for, again, K-12 and for our higher ed partners as well.
Other questions or comments on coronavirus? Going once?
I'll just, I'll say this. I don't know how, but I've been participating on a call that state and local officials have been having across the country, and so the thought there is if somebody wants to close, I mean, that could be prevention versus waiting to see that it's in the, you know, that it's here, because obviously, we just think that it's going to come here. But really helping the school districts to understand that if that's what they want to do, then they should go ahead and do that. That sporting events, that's canceling school altogether, but, and just helping them to have the tools to do that versus waiting for it to come, and then we have to try to figure out how many people have been exposed. So I'm hoping that we can have those tools and those mechanisms in place, so if a district does want to take those preventative measures before it's actually them reacting, that they're able to do that.
Very much. Any other thoughts on coronavirus? Looking around, dealing with our medical professionals first, people who have medical and scientific background, going once, twice. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Garant.
Thank you.
Reported the Michigan Teacher of the Year. You know that there's wisdom in the house when you have Michigan Teacher of the Year, the Regional Teacher of the Year in the house at the same time. Ms. Carol Lahey, the 2019-20 Michigan Teacher of the Year, will present her report. Ms. Lahey is an English Language Arts and History teacher, Stony Creek High School and Rochester Community Schools. Ms. Lahey is joined by Ms. Katie Farrell, Region Three Teacher of the Year. Ms. Farrell is a first-grade teacher at Bauer Elementary in the Hudsonville Public Schools. Ladies, good afternoon.
Thank you.
So hopefully not as dark as coronavirus. I wanted to share with you some of the trips that have been going on, and there's supposed to be pictures there. I don't know what happened to my pictures. Maybe they didn't load for some reason. There we go. Okay. So I'll go back. So one of the first things I got to do was head to Washington, DC for the NEA Foundation Gala, and they did workshops for us on trauma-informed classrooms with a man named Matthew Portell. He is a principal at Fall Hamilton Elementary in Tennessee. If you ever have a chance to hear him speak, if you're interested in trauma-informed, it was really helpful for me to hear from someone who actually works in schools. He talks about brain development, he talks about the ways that he supports his teachers. It was much more useful to me than, say, just someone talking from a clinical perspective, but more a realistic in-schools perspective, so I really found it useful. And then they also did a workshop for us on teacher self-care, and we learned all kinds of breathing, and it was actually very relaxing and soothing right before we got to go to the gala. And so that's Matthew Portell. He's a great guy. And then we went to the gala. So since it's NEA, that's my union president on the left, that's my sweet husband right next to me, and then that's Brett Smith, the MEA Secretary Treasurer, who I'm sure you all know, and his lovely wife. We had a great time, and I'm actually going to reuse that dress for a wedding. Perfect. And every state had a teacher that was honored, and the teacher from New York won the big prize, which was $25,000. It was a really exciting night, and I was happy to be there representing Michigan. And then I got to go to Google in Palo Alto, California, and these are all of the state teachers of the year, minus one. He had, he broke both his legs and couldn't come. Yeah, I don't know the full story. I'm going to get that story for you. But so there were 55 of us, including American Samoa, Washington, DC, Guam, Northern Mariana Islands, and the Department of Defense. So that's all of us. Wonderful people. I felt really lucky to be there, and I wish that more teachers could experience this kind of professional development. Some of the stuff, oh, there's me. I put an arrow to me, in case you can't find me. These are some of the things that we learned about, how to tell, how to tell our stories better, how to advocate for the profession and for our students. We learned about education policy. Down there on the bottom right, that's my homeroom for the year. They asked us why we love teaching. That's what we're holding up. I put, I wrote teenagers, because that's why I love that teaching. But I just, I learned a ton, and I made some really good friends. We've been texting ever since, and I can't wait to see them again. We're going to see each other in Washington, DC at the end of April. And there's me. I put an arrow there. That's me holding up my little sign there. Okay. And then that's just our last day. I got to hold the G in Google. We took a picture. That was in San Francisco. So we were in Palo Alto for two days of the training, and then in San Francisco. And then they had a dinner for us the last night, where, and we were sponsored by CCSO, MEMIC, obviously, is how we pay to get me to places, and of course, the Michigan Department of Education. One of the things that we do is we exchange pins, and I didn't have any, so I made my own. I designed these, and of course, I had to buy 100, even though I only need 55. So I brought them, so I would like each of you to have one, so you can pass those around. They're just fun little pins that have the state of Michigan on them, and I will be giving those to every state teacher of the year at the end of April. So I'll probably tell you all about that in May, I would think. Good?
Okay. You'll miss me. This is Katie. Hi, everybody. I'm Katie Farrell. I am a first-grade teacher at Bauer Elementary in Hudsonville. I represent Region Three, which is made up of 13 counties. So if you can see the little picture up there, it's kind of west Michigan, right smack dab in the middle. I've just included a couple pictures of myself, so obviously, a lot of this is student-driven. You'll see us in our costumes on the bottom right for Halloween. Got some aerials in there. And then, you know, a couple of my teammates from first grade, and just some of my peers that I work with in my building. So kind of, that's me in a nutshell, kids and people. Just a little bit about me. I did both my undergrad and graduate work at Western Michigan University, both in Kalamazoo, Bachelor of Science in elementary ed, and then my master's is in literacy studies. Definitely have a big passion for literacy, which I'll talk about in the next slide. But I've been a first-grade teacher for 15 years. I've held quite a few different leadership roles within my district and my building. I was our grade-level chair for the district for four years, have served on various committees, most of which have centered around ELA literacy type of activities, and then have also been able to host many student teachers, student assistants, and have been a mentor to many new teachers throughout the years, too. So love working with other teachers as well. And then for me, my big passions and beliefs center around literacy. I hold firm to the belief that every child has a right to become a successful reader. That is what we should be providing for our students. I also believe that every teacher should have the opportunity to receive the best training and the best resources to support those children. So my priorities are to build teacher capacity and the knowledge in really all reading skills, but most importantly, foundational reading skills. Being a first-grade teacher, that's of the utmost importance to me. I truly believe in the science of reading and the research that supports it, and my goal is to help do what I can to improve Michigan's literacy rate. Two organizations that really are near and dear to me are, one of them is EBLY, which is actually a Michigan-based organization, and it's really focused on foundational reading skills, and it's kind of brought me on my path to literacy. And then another big one that is actually going to And then another big one that is actually gonna be new for Michigan is the Reading League is an organization that's out of New York. Um and it's, their, their motto is when we know better, we do better. Um and their goal is to provide literacy resources to our teachers and we do not have a chapter in Michigan currently, but I am part of a group that's working to bring that to Michigan, just to help educate more of our teachers.
Katie is leading a Twitter chat tonight on literacy, so she's probably gonna have to leave us early so she's not tweeting and driving.
Thank you very much. Those were terrific. Uh board members, reflections on the presentations? Comments, thoughts?
Well, you're all are having fun as you proceed with your responsibility of being a teacher because that's a challenge. So congratulations.
Thank you for your excitement. It's refreshing.
Thank you for your stories. I would like to next week talk with you about the notion of telling our stories as educators. I think that's important. I think oftentimes we tell our stories but don't tell our stories and I think that's part of Proud Michigan Educator, which is so powerful. I'd like to figure out how to expand upon those stories.
Educators are sometimes a little hesitant to make themselves the protagonists of their own stories as well and sometimes we need to. I mean, it's good to put kids as part of your story, but we need to tell our own stories as, as educators as well.
Well, you can't, you can't serve kids un, unless you're vertical.
Exactly.
Right? And there's all of that, there's all of that. How do you, how do you support yourself in supporting children? Yes, okay. Thank you so much. Next item on today's agenda is the approval of standards for the preparation and practice of special education administrators. The standards for the preparation and practice of special education administrators were presented to the board on August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Two rounds of public comment were solicited in August through October two thousand nineteen and December through January twenty twenty. Board is being asked to approve the standards today. Presenters today are Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator Student and School Supports, Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, Dr. Sean Kotke, Education Consultant Manager, the Office of Educator Excellence, and Mr. Sung-Ti Shu, Education Consultant in the Office of Educator Excellence. There will be a PowerPoint present, presentation. Uh gentle folks, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Come back. So uh we're going to begin with a big question. Why are we reviewing new teacher preparation standards? And for this, I turn things over to Leah. Uh she's going to speak to us a little bit about broader initiatives around the certification.
So just as a reminder, we um gathered stakeholders together and it was decided in two thousand eighteen that we would change our certificate structure. In light of that change, we are working through the changes that are necessary to our preparation programs. Um so we're in an ongoing manner revising our standards, including today's revised standards, and we are working through um changes of how teachers will be placed under the new certificate structure. Um public comment for that is open right now. As a reminder, uh the definitions that are important when we have these conversations are the definition of preparation, which are the standards and clinical experiences that comprise an educator's program of study. Certification and licensure, which is the actual piece of paper or electronic license that is issued to a person that identifies how they've been prepared. Placement are the state guidelines that govern how a educator may use their teaching certificate and endorsement in a classroom setting. And flexibilities are the additional options we have for educators to teach outside their assignments, such as valid permits and authorizations and approvals for special education. So appropriate placement under the old staffing system, teachers were appropriately placed when they were teaching in an area which they were prepared and it was on their certificate. They could obtain additional flexibilities using permits. Under the proposed system that is out for public comment right now, preparation and certification will not necessarily match placement and flexibilities. Put simply, what is written on the certificate is not necessarily the only thing a teacher can teach and this is based on the fact that we are in a time of shortage and we know we need increased options for placement. So in the new proposed system, teachers will also be appropriately placed when outside their area of preparation and certification in specific circumstances and we will still have additional flexibilities available with our permits. And as I mentioned, public comment is open for this right now. So shifting back to today's focus, I'll turn it over to Sean and Sung-Ti to talk about the standards for the preparation and practices of special education administrators.
Great, thank you. Sung-Ti?
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to come talk to you today. Um so ultimately, the, the reason why for the um updated standards um for preparation and practice is to provide our students with um competent as special education administrators. However, there are some of more, some other reasons why uh we wanted to do this uh at this time. Um one is because the standards are often revised um seven to ten years and on the last, last time, the Mars standards were competency were, competencies were established, it was around two thousand and eleven, so it's about time. Um the National CEC standards was established back in two thousand and fifteen, so we're kind of in the middle of that. And the Office of Educator Excellence really is positioned to take over the responsible, responsibility because we do have in office a system of preparation program monitoring and support as well as um a system of educator credentialing and a dedicated staff um to provide service to those who are credentialed. Um the other reason why is to provide preparation programs some flexibilities, allowing the preparation programs to create integrated leadership programs with different career paths rather than having specific programs for specific role, such as supervisor programs for supervisors and director programs for directors only. Um in addition, um current competencies written as in Mars are topical in nature, so it, it does, they don't provide guideline to the knowledge and skills a special education director or supervisor or a special education administrators should be able to, uh should know and be able to do and demonstrate. And um there's also a lack of mobility, meaning that if you get into a directed role, you can, you have to take additional coursework to become a supervisor vice versa. So with the new uh standards, we hope to overcome those barriers. Just as a reminder, in the Mars rules right now, ISDs are required to, to employ at least one um directors, um but the supervisors are optional for at any level. But then if you look at the numbers, um here's kind of what you can see, um the credentials, um credentials, um the credentials here include temporary continued, continuing temporary and full approval, okay? And employers here, we mean um the ISDs, districts and schools. Um but you can see that this numbers over the years has grown a little bit, but mostly they're pretty steady. Um so this is the group that we're talking about, right? We are not talking about a lot of people, we're talking about a very limited number of, of individuals. And I also wanted to provide you as kind of a refresher as to this, the process for standard development and we started with, with our stakeholder group in August twenty eighteen and we meet um every other week virtually with a couple in-person meetings to develop these, this set of standards. Um we have nineteen external stakeholders. They include administrators, practitioners, representatives from preparation programs and professional organizations. Uh for example, like the Michigan Association for Administrators for Special Education, um Michigan is Association of Intermediate School Administration, um and the Secondary School Principals and Elementary-Middle School Principals Association, they're all invited to be part of this conversation as well as our internal stakeholder groups, like the Office of Special Education. So the stakeholder group met again every other week through March twenty nineteenth and the initial board presentation was in August last year. Um after the board meeting, we uh sent out the first round of public, public comments um in October, I mean between October to August and October of two thousand and nineteen and then we had a second round of publication, I mean, public comments um in December of nineteen and January of two thousand and twenty. And the purpose of the second round of public comment is to garner support, greater support for the standards, which was added based on the first round of comments. And I'll go through those comments with you momentarily, but I want you to um first let you know that these are the three key recommendations from the stakeholder groups. It's, um we, they would like us to create one set of standards that apply across board special education administrators rather than having specific standards for different roles within, um within, yeah, within the schools. Um they would like to us to create, to allow one preparation programs that would um prepare this, these group of individuals for different roles within the school, such as, right? So very similar to the principal programs will, will prepare all building-level administrators and um the central office programs will prepare all personnel working in the central office. And then they would like us to create one additional um credential that would cover the whole spectrum of special education administrators rather than just directors and supervisors. So the, uh the first round of public comments, we um, we, we received hundred and twenty submissions and hundred, hundred and nine of them indicated some, a spectrum of support, right? Um so either, either to be support, support with minor revisions or significant, as neutral, right? And of the forty-one indicated significant changes needed, only three provided input and the inputs are about individual um eligibility to become supervisor, I mean, to become special education administrators. But we, in, in looking through the comments and feedbacks, um the, the stakeholder group did edit the um standards. So one of the, one, some of the comments kind of addressed there is a lack of emphasis on early childhood, specifically the term of infant and toddler were not, are not in the standards. And so um the stakeholder group decided in standard four, element two, added early intervention, the words in there, and then also in element five, standard in, of the, I mean, standard two, element five, to add the words part C of IDEA, so that the early childhood portion is, is kind of emphasized within the standard. And um they also asked to put the word exactly infant and toddler in the standards, but the stakeholder group felt that the words students include everyone that's receiving services through schools regardless of their age group. So they decide, they opt not to um put infant and toddler in the standards. Um the second category of the comments that, that were um given during the first round of public comments is, is about transition plan for current approval of, I mean, current directors and supervisors who holds a valid approval. Um the current credentials were remain valid, but will offer, we, we will offer pathways for those who desire to transition to the new, new credential. And then um the third comment, the third category of, of the comments is about requirement for new credential. Uh many worry that um we put too much emphasis on teaching rather than um kind of view all experiences serving students with disabilities the same, um meaning those who, those who serve as, you know, for example, school, um social workers or school counselors or OTPT, they should also have the opportunity to become um special education administrators regardless the lack of teaching experience in their career pathway. So the second, so based on those, we made some changes and sent out um the second round of public comments and this time we, we received thirty-two submissions. And we have made additional, um additional changes. But I, you would probably like to know that of the three individuals who indicated they are against the proposed standards, one is, none of them um provided any um clear feedback on how the, the proposed standards could be enhanced. Okay, there are also, um let's see, there are two big categories. One is about standard five leadership. There, the comment um wanted to have a stronger emphasis on the special education administrator's ability not to, not only her or himself to work with peer educators, but to train his or her staff to work with peer educators and we reflect that on the, on the standard uh five, element six. And then again, there are some more questions about the transition plan for credentialing. And so in total, there are fifty elements grouped into eight different standards and here are the eight standards. Standard one um is special education administrators promote the use of valid and reliable assessment practices and there was no comments, so there were more, no changes made. Standard two, um special education administrators use their knowledge of curriculum and specialized instruction to improve programs, supports and related services within classroom, class, school, district and community settings. And um there is one additional um element added, as mentioned before, we added so that part B and part C of the IDEA are both mentioned in this set of, in this particular standard. Standard three, special education administrators facilitate the continuous assessment of the eligibility process and the efficacy of program supports and services within classroom, school, district and community settings for meeting the needs of students with disabilities. There's a minor change in element one as well as element three and five. Standard four, special education administrators conduct, evaluate and use inquiry to guide professional practices. And this is where we put in the phrase early intervention to emphasize working with the early um younger age students. Standard five, special education administrators provide leadership to formulate vision and goals, establish and model high professional expectations, advocate for effective policies and evidence-based practices and create positive and productive work environments. And this is where we changed, changed the language to reflect um their ability to work with and to help others work with peer professionals, peer educators. Standard six, special education administrators advocate for and ensure the implementation of relevant local, state and federal laws and policies at classroom, school and district levels. And there was no comment, so there was no change to this, this standard. Standard seven, special education administrators use professional standards to inform, practice, engage in lifelong learning, advance the profession and perform leadership responsibilities to promote the success of educators and all students. Side change, element five. Last one, standard eight, special education administrators engaging either decision-making and cooperate with stakeholders to improve programs, related services and outcomes for all students and their families. And no change was suggested. So um right after the board approves this set of standards, we'll begin to work, we'll begin to work with preparation programs to begin to work with preparation programs to develop new programs. And in, at the end of the year, we hope to begin review of the, approval of the, of the programs and by next summer, candidates can begin enter the program.
To thank our presenters for their presentations today. Board, your questions or comments? Mr. McNamara.
A bunch of questions. I apologize. You can cut me off. Purpose, so I want to understand what's required and what's not required. So we have MARS. I guess that was based on law that became, went through the administrative rules. Is that right? It was state law, MARS?
MARS is administrative rule. Administrative rule serves.
I mean, I used to chair the JCAR Joint Administrative Rules Committee.
Right. So you would know it's not law, but it serves the purpose of law.
Right, but it's based on, kind of based on law. So is ESSA requiring us to make this change? It says something about change, recent changes in NCLB and MESSA. So is ESSA driving this, or is this at the beginning, when you said we're changing the certificate structure?
ESSA relaxed requirements around highly qualified and certification for educators. And so it provided an opportunity for us to provide additional supports.
Okay.
Once NCLB was removed.
Okay. So, so, so we're doing this, are we assuming that locals wouldn't be able to hire the right people, that we need to kind of give them parameter, parameters on hiring the right people, or, because like, so they couldn't hire somebody that with the title of special education director unless there's the certificate? Is that the idea? And is the, is the thinking that they couldn't hire the right person on their own and might have a background of who knows what, but it just wouldn't work or wouldn't be equitable? Or what's the?
This is a position that requires a certificate and an endorsement.
No, I know that it requires it, but why? I mean, why couldn't a local say, I think that, you know, I like this background, I don't necessarily want this background, these are the people we want to hire for the job?
Yeah, I mean, so historically, the Michigan Department of Education has valued preparation and certification for educators, and these are part of our educator group. And so for that reason, we create programs and standards and expectations and competencies that these educators demonstrate in order to earn this endorsement. And then the endorsement is required in order to receive state aid funding to pay their salaries to place them.
Okay. So, okay. I mean, so they literally, they, if they wanted, okay, can they share people? Like, if they don't need a hole, can they share it with another district or?
Yes, and that's common.
Can a person say, 20% of your time, because we're smaller, is going to be this, this title and, okay.
And that's why on the chart with the numbers, they don't typically hire one per district, they hire them at the ISD, and then they serve multiple districts and co-share.
Okay. So I heard the word flexibility, so I kind of like flexibility. So is this easing? I mean, the, the idea that, that we're going to have, be able to do both, so they don't have to go back if they want to be from a administrator to supervisor, they have to, currently, they'd have to go back?
Right.
So now they're, not necessarily, they could get an overall degree or certificate?
Okay.
Or background so that they could get one or the other easily? Okay, so that sounds good to me. I mean, I, I like flexibility, I just don't, I'm always skeptical when, you know, the group is kind of heavy with higher ed people that kind of says, well, in order to do this, you got to have more higher ed. So I've always, but this doesn't necessarily sound like that. So this sounds like there's some flexibility and may not actually end in that. So is it really just a title or, you know, can somebody, what is it, does the, does the state kind of go in and say, ah, you didn't get a certificate and you're kind of doing some of these things, so you're in trouble or something if you don't go and get this person certified? Or, you know, do we have like a, do we have like a certificate police that goes in and says, well, you're, you're 8%, but if you get 10%, then you got to go get a certificate or something like that?
We, the answer is no. We, we do however periodically check, if you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, technically, yes, I'm the certificate police. So we do, actually, the most common occurrence for us finding situations where educators are working without the appropriate endorsement is parents and community members call us and they raise concern that they believe an individual is working without the appropriate preparation and certification. And when that happens and in other circumstances where it's raised, we do go in, we talk to them. And in the case of traditional programs, the law requires us to withhold their salary for the period of non-certification. IDEA is a little bit different if these funds are paid through IDEA, and so it's handled differently because it's federal funding and not state funding.
Okay. And then you mentioned about a pathway, or in response to maybe some of the concerns, or maybe it wasn't, maybe it was already built in, there's going to be a pathway for people that currently are certified under MARS? Is that going to be, how onerous is that going to be? So do they need to go back and get higher ed training in order to, for this pathway?
Yeah, I mean, we don't know yet because the standards haven't been approved, and so we still have to give them to the programs and have them develop programs, but they have generally been.
Yeah, one of the concerns in the first round of public comment was disenfranchising people who are currently serving in these roles and who have the approvals. And so as part of announcing that second period, we released a memo signed by Dr. Kiesler and Dr. Koenigstein about, we're not disenfranchising those people, still honor those credentials. So those who are currently serving as a director, currently serving as a supervisor can continue to do so under their credentials. And even leaving open those pathways to earn those more limited role credentials while creating this third pathway to earn a credential that you could be more flexibly move around. And so then, once we have those programs built, finding entry points for those who want to, who have a director, supervisor and would like to upgrade, to be able to do that with a minimum.
Oh, and upgrade, so they could, there's nothing that's going to take away their, their position?
Right.
They could just upgrade to the double? Oh, okay. And then finally, I saw the group that was on this, creating the standards, there wasn't, I didn't see anybody that are, like, from an advocacy group, like a Marcy Lipsit or somebody in that area that is, you know, that interacts with administrators and sometimes could really have provided, you know, maybe a challenging but helpful input. Was there?
So I think, and the team can talk about it too. I mean, I think you, you're probably looking at page six of the standards in the group. I think when we work with, it depends on what you mean by advocacy group. So you can see people on here who are with like the Elementary and Middle School Principal Association. And then some of these people, like the people from Kent Intermediate or some of these other places, are people who have a role but also advocate on behalf of the field.
Yeah, but the, but often it's the parents and these advocates that are battling pretty much everybody that's in there, and there was nobody kind of saying, well, actually, the administrators that I duke it out with, if they only had this and this, it would have been a lot better or something.
I think we heard from them in the public comment. And hence the changes for the second, for the second round of public comment. We see as valid, as valid a part of the participation as the core writing team.
We also did, the Office of Special Education was partners on this. So working with them on the development, the stakeholder group meetings, you know, and their ability to represent concerns they hear from the field as well, I think is the third stool of that, so.
Okay. Yeah, I talked to somebody that's on CAC.
Make a note for the future to think about.
I talked to somebody in CAC, and that was their observation too, is that they were kind of disappointed that, that, that angle wasn't represented. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions or comments? Thoughts, questions, comments?
So I haven't looked at the MARS codes, but I'm just wondering around the different elements, the basic standards. Is there something that incorporates dispute resolution, dealing with parents, you know, how to, you know, because I know sometimes the IEP process, you know, getting the plans together can sometimes be, sometimes be contentious. So, and we had talked about in some of these groups that we met with the old lieutenant governor, of looking at ways to resolve disputes without lawyers, without, you know, trying to figure out a way to get outcomes everyone can, you know, instead of being so adversarial as it can, it can get to be. Is there, is that part of the, what these administrators learn? And if it is, where is it? And if not, why not?
Yeah, we do think about how to involve and partner with the family quite constantly as we were developing this set of standards. And I think the, the stakeholder group particularly, specifically put those in standard aid, ethics and collaboration.
Okay.
And so you will see, actually, you will see throughout the document, the family and communities are, are kind of, kind of put throughout the document, but specifically in standard aid to work with, with community and families.
And one last, one other thought is, so many of our kids, kids with IEPs are in general ed setting. And I've seen where you talk about professional learning, and I'm assuming that means being able to provide professional learning, right? So does that also include, you know, providing professional learning to the entire faculty of a school, not just the, yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, and we specifically try not to, well, it's kind of funny, we try not to be very specific to talk about special education administrators only working with special education staff, right? This document really tried to kind of blur that line so that the special education administrators have the ability to work with staff in general within the school setting.
Other questions or comments? Dr. Koenigstein, do you have anything to add for us?
First time this came through, I spoke and certainly supportive of these, appreciate the leadership and partnership with OEE. It was truly a partnership to bring these to work. I think we did the right thing by going back out for that second public comment.
And I think that that's important for people to re-reflect on, that we didn't simply do the pro forma public comment. We did a public comment, we reflected upon the comment, we adjusted what we initially had, we went back out and retested. So I think that there's some power to the process. It wasn't treated as a pro forma, it was treated as, as integral to what we were, what we were doing. Any other questions or comments?
One.
Yes, ma'am.
Just following up on something Tom had said. I would also encourage, there are stakeholder groups to include CAC or representatives from CAC in this conversation. I mean, they're, they meet monthly, they're a wide variety of folks, they include a lot of parents or folks directly affected. So I would encourage that when there's any sorts of rules that touch on special education, to make sure that there's representatives from that group.
Mr. McNamara.
Sorry, let me see the time. Yeah, I'm okay. So would you say that this is, so, a lot of what MARS is, is still going to be in place, right? We're not repealing MARS. So from, you know, I know that this isn't shared by everybody necessarily, or my, my interest usually with local control. But would you say that based, if these are approved, that, that locals will have more choices or different choices or less choices of people to hire?
More choices. I think more choices.
Why, why would you say that?
Because instead of hiring a person for, so for example, if I had an English endorsement when I left my teacher preparation institution, the school district hired me for that, I'd only be able to teach English. But if I left with English and science, you could hire me as one person for two different roles. So in this case, you may be getting the same amount of people, but you can hire them for two different roles instead of needing two separate people for those roles. So although it's not an increase in number, it's an increase of flexibility of how they can be used.
Right. And I appreciate that, I understand that part of what is being, but there's more than just that, right? I mean, is the other stuff restrictive or, because, yeah, that part, I, that was where I attached flexibility and heard it, and I agree. And I understand that. I'm afraid I might not understand everything that's in here. So I'm just wanting to make sure, is there, are there other things that would be more restrictive?
No. So when we asked for a public comment and we shared with the committee, there wasn't anything in here that raised concern that people would feel like they would no longer want to become a special education administrator. There was always standards, these are just an update to the standards, and there's nothing in there that is more rigorous, they're just different.
Okay. I guess I didn't plan on voting for it, but I guess I will. I just, I do, I am disappointed in the, that again, there was nobody who, I really think it might not have been as cohesive or, you know, might have made for a little bit more challenges during the meeting, to have somebody who has duked it out with administrators on behalf of parents. But I nonetheless think that would have been important to have here and.
I think that's a great point of feedback, and we're committed to continuous improvement on our stakeholder engagement process. So we always try to think about the perspectives that should be involved, and this has been good feedback from the board that we can integrate in the future. There's, there's always another group of stakeholders coming.
Yeah, there's always more standards.
Yeah.
And I think you can measure the concerns in a community by the energy within that community. And after the second period of comment, there just wasn't a lot of there there. There just wasn't a lot of energy left. It's not like this is a disconnected world. This is a very plugged in community. And had they thought that there were issues, we'd have known about it quickly. Thank you for the presentation. Board, may I please have a motion to approve the standards for the preparation and practice of special education administrators?
Go move.
Moved by Ms. Ramos Montini, seconded by Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. And just, I want to thank our, our presenters, but also want to acknowledge, I was with Ms. Breen, Dr. Kotke, Dr. Sarah Kate Van and Ms. Kelly Cassidy with the Deans of Schools of Education on Friday. And there is a great relationship between MDE and the Schools of Education. And we don't always agree 100% of the time, but there's a lot of respect that flows back and forth. And I think that that helps us serve educators and students in the state. So I want to say, say that with appreciation. Thank you. Next item on today's agenda is the approval of strengthening career and technical education for the 21st Century Act. It is the Perkins Five Plan on February 11, 2020. Dr. Scott Koenigstein and Dr. Brian Piles presented the final draft of the Perkins Five State Plan to the State Board of Education. Board is being asked to approve the plan today. Following this, we will submit to the U.S. Department of Education by April 1, 2020. We will not be hand-delivering that, but we will be delivering it nonetheless. Here to present to us, Dr. Scott Koenigstein, the Deputy Superintendent for P20 Systems and Student Transitions, and Dr. Jill Crowell, the Supervisor of Grants Assessment, Monitoring and Evaluation in the Office of Career and Technical Education. Welcome to you.
Thank you, Dr. Eisen. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to, to come back and join you this afternoon. So we have been with you, I think, five times over the last 15 months in preparation for approval of the plan. If you can recall, there was conversations around the planned plan, then there was conversations around what that plan looked like. And then we came back and reported on the progress of that plan. And we were here last month with the, an actual plan, the Perkins Five Plan for your review and discussion. We're here today seeking your approval, certainly willing to answer any questions that you may have based upon the document that you received last month.
Any, the board has seen and reseen and re-reseen, and I don't necessarily want to go over the same soil repeatedly, but if you do have questions, this is an opportunity. And if you don't, this is an opportunity for a vote.
I would move that we support the, the updated plan.
Moved by our president. Any second? Seconded by Ms. Fecto. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, for your engagement throughout the process. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item. Next item on today's agenda is the evaluation of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. Dr. Albridge will lead this discussion.
So per the contract with the State Superintendent, every year by April 1, the State Board of Education engages in an annual review of the Superintendent's performance. And given the fact that Superintendent Rice is only seven months into the job, it always proves to be a little bit difficult when you have to evaluate a Superintendent who's been in the position for less than a year, but hence, that is part of our contractual obligation. And so the Board went into executive session per the request of Superintendent Rice earlier today, and I'm happy to report that the overall consensus of the group was extremely positive. The Board mentioned things like Superintendent Rice's excellent communication style, the fact that he has kept us in the loop and up to date on a number of different issues over the last several months. He reaches out on a regular basis, connects with each of us on an individual basis as well. Also mentioned his leadership style and his interaction with students, that, and his emphasis on student achievement, which comes across in everything that comes out of his office. It was also noted, the number of school visits that he's had in the short time he's been here, and how that is a reflection of his priorities as the State Superintendent. Also noted was his willingness to work with all different constituencies in his work in building relationships and connections on behalf of the department and the Superintendent and the State Board of Education, and how much we appreciate his efforts in that. And then finally, just the fact that he's highly accessible and responsive to the myriad of concerns that come out of each of us on a regular basis, and does so with grace and patience, and how much we appreciate that. So I am going to make a motion, and then we'll ask for a second, and then I can open it up for any other comments that Board members might have to add as well. So I will make a motion pursuant to the agreement between the State Board of Education and Dr. Michael Rice, Superintendent of Public Instruction. The State Board of Education has engaged in an annual evaluation of Dr. Rice and has found his performance to be satisfactory.
Second. For. I supported twice.
Any other discussion?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, just that the whole, you know, the satisfactory doesn't mean that, you know, that he hasn't done a really good job.
Let me clarify, yes. So per the contract, the contract says that per a satisfactory, and that is the language used in the contract, per a satisfactory evaluation, then the Superintendent's contract will automatically renew for an additional year. That is why we are using the word satisfactory in the motion. Please do not think that that in any way diminishes the outstanding report that we all agreed to earlier today. With that, any discussion?
Thumbs it up.
I mean, I think you captured all of our input. We definitely gave you our input, which was favorable and spoke to an outstanding evaluation. And Cassandra has explained why we've gone the language state satisfactory, but we appreciate your energy and your, as Cassandra said, the way that you communicate with us, as well as all the other people in the state that you have to work with and communicate with.
Yeah, and I would just say that I really appreciate it, even though none of us really liked the ADF at all, that the way Dr. Rice and his team, but especially with his leadership, brought us all into that process, and, you know, even tolerated us not wanting to make decisions on some of it because we didn't want to own it, but nonetheless, we, you know, I think that other, that is not something that was a foregone conclusion, he didn't have to, and that's not the only time where he engages, that you engage, I shouldn't say he, you engage us, which I really appreciate. And like I said in the meeting, even though I was not one who supported your coming to this position, I really appreciate that you are, you know, very fair and very, I really feel like you're doing a good job leading. Even though I may not like all the policies.
I respect that.
Thank you. As I indicated to you earlier, leadership matters, and I am very thankful and very pleased in the fact that we truly have an educational leader here advocating for students first, for all educators, for all individuals who are leading our schools here in Michigan. It's not an easy job, but again, you brought the leadership skills here and have shown in a very short period of time that we have made the right choice, so thank you.
And I, I mean, one of the reasons why I advocated for your hire is because of your depth of knowledge, your leadership from, in Kalamazoo and all these other organizations across the state, fighting for equitable funding, doing a lot of, you know, that you came to us with a lot of strong leadership experience, and I think you've built on that and shown yourself to be a leader for the whole state, and I think you've done a wonderful job, and for all the other reasons already stated, I won't repeat them.
Well, I concur with what has been said, but I truly appreciate the fact that, as Tom said, some of us did not vote positively when you were hired. However, you have not taken that as a grudge against us. You have been a true leader, not holding grudges because the job is bigger than yourself. And so we truly appreciate that. As I just said, that's a sign of true leadership. We also appreciate the fact that you came in and you plunged into the position, and you did not say, I know everything, you took the advice of your staff and utilized it to the best of your ability, and so everything started falling into place. Also, the fact that you survey us and see how we're thinking, that has been very helpful as Board members. And also, you always try to make us, or help us get well-prepared as we sit here in front of the cameras and we discuss the different subjects that we have to discuss for the day. So again, true leadership, you did not hold grudges against us, you are a true leader, and we move forward together, so thank you very much.
I just want to thank you for going above and beyond, that you don't just go within your job description, that you try to do everything that you can to make things work, to make things right, and that your heart is really in this work. So just want to thank you, and I appreciate you for that.
Comments?
More, and that you stepped in at a time when there was a lot going on. I mean, we could say the A to F, we could say Benton Harbor, we could say Flint, but managing all that while also trying to make sure you set a path forward with our strategic planning for the state of Michigan around education, so much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. And just because the one thing that Lupe did tell me at lunch that she didn't repeat here was that I was succinct.
Did I was what?
That I was succinct. So I don't want, I don't want to disappoint her, I just want to say it's an honor to work with you on behalf of 1.5 million public school children. Thank you. Next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative update. Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, Chairperson of the Board Legislative Committee, will you please provide your reply?
Okay, we're passing the reports out, or do you have it? And I'm also going to be passing around the Legislative Committee issues form. Thank you. Okay, well, I thank you for this opportunity of serving as the Chair of the Legislative Committee, and I want to repeat that I serve as the Chairperson, and Dr. Judy Pritchett as the co-chair, and a member, the Honorable Nikki Snyder. We have a new member for our committee as far as the Michigan Department of Education is concerned. The State Superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice, is joining us as we prepare to come before you. Marty, by, his real name is Martin, actually, Caroline Netham, Stephen DeGraw, and our beloved Marilyn Schneider service the liaisons from the department. We met on Tuesday, February the 25th, at 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And you see the objectives that we have for this year, and we continue being proactive together with your help. So with your help, we can even become better. And we have developed a form, all of you have seen it. Now, we're going to go through the agenda, the approved agenda that the Legislative Committee is bringing before you, and if there's any new items that you want us to consider, we will consider them in the next board meeting. We feel that it's very important for us to get prepared so we can make an intelligent, informed report to you, and so then we can make a decision as a board whether to consider a letter of recommendation, of support, or a resolution, or otherwise. So keep that in mind, so if you want us to consider anything else over, beyond what we're going to present to you as an agenda, please do so in this form, or we can send it to you by online, and then we can get better prepared. The department needs time to prepare themselves, so we can give you an informed opinion or information, and then we can move forward with that information. Okay? All right, so let's go to the agenda on page two, and we're going to start with the Michigan Merit Curriculum Legislation, and it's a big, big item that is hovering over us, so Marty's going to take over.
So this was, not much has changed from last month, Senate Bill 600 and 601 have not moved, Senate Bill 171, which strikes a sunset to allow for one foreign language credit to be transferred by a CTE or visual, that has moved out of the House Education Committee. The other ones have not moved, and I was asked at the last meeting about a possible statement by the Board, and I found that in June of last year, the Board did make a statement on supporting the full range of opportunities in the Michigan Merit Curriculum. And the last line is, we oppose any attempt to change state law that may lead local school districts to eliminate vital programs in the arts and world languages. So the Board did act a year ago, June, on this issue. So it is a pretty recent statement on the Michigan Merit Curriculum.
So in comparison to what Dr. Rice has put out, what would you say?
But I, Dr. Rice, he can speak, but his position is, you know, we need to take a look at the whole Michigan Merit Curriculum at this time, not just piecemeal it.
Okay, all right.
That's, it's not inconsistent with what you've said at all, but I do think we, if this is going to be our moment, let it be our moment. Let this be the generational moment to look at MMC, and let this be what we live with over the next eight to 10 years. Let's not do this over and over and over again, you know, it's like Groundhog's Day or 50 First Dates. You know, it's some bad movie over and over and over again, it's enough. Just saying.
So that's.
Can I just add, the Governor's Advisory Council is also putting together some ideas about these proposals, because they asked us to, and I'm finding that a lot of what we're coming up with is very much in line with what I've heard here at this table. So we'll have something to present to the Governor probably a couple weeks, or next month, in April, but I think it's going to be very similar to what you have already put forward, as far as that generational change that you're talking about.
Yes, and I think there's a power to a generational reaffirmation as well. So we can say, you know, we mostly like the Michigan Merit Curriculum, here are two or three things that we want to change or improve about it, there's nothing wrong with that. And again, let that be a generational reaffirmation, so we're not each year having conversations about the same thing. This is an ideal moment, seems to us anyway, to reflect upon graduation for special needs You want to open up Michigan Merit Curriculum, let's look at a group of young people that have really been disconnected from that, and shouldn't have been in retrospect. It's been too long that that's been the case. Let's, you know, if we're going to make this our generational moment, it's got to be our generational moment for 100% of the kids, not for some subset thereof. So I would argue, if we open this up, and we've opened it up, you can't, you can't do this and exclude special needs children. You want to do the real work, let's have that conversation. And that conversation with respect ought not to be done quickly, it ought to be done thoughtfully.
171 has been voted out of House Education, but it's not, it has not been voted on the House floor yet, correct?
No, correct.
And we don't think it's been scheduled even?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions on the, on the first part of the report? Okay, the bullying, we reported on that?
Yes, well, we did have, the committee had a brief discussion about the budget update, the committees, the subcommittees in the Legislature appropriations committees are having hearings, doing their due diligence, and they have not come out with their proposals yet, but that, the process is in the works there. And they have to have a budget passed and sent to the Governor by June 30. As far as the bullying update, as you can see, the department staff are reviewing the current policy and policies on bullying that the Board adopted in 2010, and the staff has been connecting with stakeholders to receive input on updating the policy. Initial feedback will be provided to the Board in the 28th Board Brief, so it was there. So you've gotten the, I believe you have, right? You're supposed to. If you haven't yet, we'll double check and we'll get it to you.
Okay. Any questions on the bullying? Is it in the last one?
Yes, and then the committee had an extensive discussion about Senate Bill 657, which was discussed by the CAC representative here.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon.
657.
I need to reconnect. I need to reconnect. Earth to Michael, come in, Michael.
The evaluation.
Motion to reopen the conversation about the evaluation. It died for lack of a second. Senate Bill 657.
So the bill is still in the Senate. Nothing has moved yet. It's on the floor, I believe, in the Senate, and possibility to be moved soon.
Yeah, I heard it might come up for vote tomorrow.
Possibly.
I've heard the same thing, that it could come up as early as tomorrow.
Heard it from you.
Did you hear the same thing?
Passed out of the Senate today.
It did? Well, there you go. Even quicker.
Oh, it did pass. It was voted today, yeah. I thought that was a possibility, too.
Do you know the vote?
Yep.
Thirty-one, seven.
Do you know if there was amendments to it? I'm so sorry to just put this. Okay, all right. So first of all, I wanted to thank CAC. I was there with them for most of the day on March 4th, and Terry was great, and Scott, and the other Terry is not here, Terry Chapman. So it was really great to engage with people out in the field about what they thought, listening to different sides of the bill. So it was, and I learned a lot being there as well, more. I want to say that I think that discussion, and we shared this information with Senator, I'm gonna mispronounce her name.
Tice?
No.
Paul Hanke?
Paul Hanke. I mispronounce her name, too, Tice. And it seems to me, there was, I was told that there was gonna be a number of amendments that were in line with a lot, with a number of the recommendations that CAC had also discussed, such as, and I don't know for sure, so I'm understanding perhaps something with a sunset, and not only a sunset, but also to look and study the, what happens with it, and to decide for the next legislature, since we have term limits, that they will have some information on which to decide whether it should move forward. So there's those considerations. There's a path for people who are ready, and I know Senator Paul Hanke wanted very much to make sure that people had some sort of educational background before they got this expedited alternative certification. There is a pathway for certified teachers to move more quickly to get their specialized certification. There's a number of more credits that are gonna be added, not just the 12. So one thing that didn't come up, but there was a lot of discussion in CAC, and I think it's really important to bring up, is that it's, we're glad that there's a recognition. We know people out in the field, principals, teachers, understand that there's long-term substitutes. There's a real need, I mean, especially in, for teachers in special education, and especially in high-needs districts. So, you know, we, there was a lot of discussion and hope that maybe we could look at more long-term instead of a stopgap measure, such as forgiving student loans of either people who are going into special education, returning teachers, current teachers, even long-term subs who want to go, that have worked in special ed, to get forgiveness on their loans to be able to, that's a major barrier for a lot of people. You know, they go into debt, they do a very difficult job, and often, you know, going in at entry level, it's not enough to pay the loans off. So to incentivize people to go into special education and particularly in high-needs areas by making it more economical for them to do that. So I think having CAC as part of that discussion and being engaged in that, and they were encouraged to also contact their legislators to let them know how they felt, too, in the process. And I just think that we need to have more of this, and we need, and I would encourage the Governor's Office to look at, and the Legislature to look at, that what we really need to get quality teachers, not just these stopgaps by lowering entrance requirements. We need, if we want quality teachers, especially for our most vulnerable students, we have to come up, we have to find out why teachers are leaving, why they're not coming in, and then come up with solutions that focus on that. And from what I heard from a number of the folks there, it has to do with the lack of supports, the lack of financial support, and that we need to come up with solutions that incorporate those things. So I applaud the amendments. I think it makes the bill better. I opposed the bill initially as it was initially introduced, but I think with those amendments, it's better. And I hope that there's more thought on long-term solutions for our kids and their families.
Thank you very much for that. Other reflections on Senate Bill 657?
I would just say that we, of course, all lean to Michelle for her expertise. And it's a struggle, because when you're there in these districts that are short on educate, all educators, but then when you see that our children that are most in need of an educator, a body, and someone who is adequately certified and trained, you know that something has to give. So how do we address this issue? How do we put in some temporary measures until we can get it? Hopefully, you know, we get the right educators with the adequate, with the proper certifications. So we have a ways to go, but appreciate the input and the additions, and hopefully they do get added. And then hopefully we can advocate for it.
Well, and the long term is important.
The long term.
And that's gonna be the subject of more conversation. Ms. Snyder?
A good question here, I'm just curious about, maybe Marty, you do or don't know, but what are other states doing about this problem? Do we know in general?
I do not know.
Okay. Do other states have the problem on the level that we have it?
On the level? I'm sure most states have it. I'm not sure at the level.
It would be interesting to know.
One of the things that some states are doing, I can answer her. One of the things that some states are doing is creating a paraprofessional career ladder.
Okay.
And there's a handful of states, I think maybe four or five, something like that. I would love to see us give our paraprofessionals a chance to be fully certified teachers and give them ways that wouldn't cost them or put them into debt. They're already there, they already know our students. Many of them are, could step right in, honestly. So that is something that I would love for Michigan to look into doing.
Let's just stop there for one second and reflect upon that idea, because that's a really important idea. When teachers struggle, they struggle predominantly with relationships, oftentimes called classroom management, but at base, it's relationships. It's not content, it's not instructional methodology, it's your connection with children. And paraprofessionals have those connections, as a rule, substantially. They are well on their way to being teachers. It is true that not every paraprofessional or every support staff member for that member will become a teacher, but it is also true that paraprofessionals have a lot of steps on that path. And we should be absolutely promoting Grow Your Own programs substantially. We ought not to just be simply promoting them, but we ought to be encouraging them. We ought to be incentivizing those, not because it's ideal for states to have to do that, but because of where we are. You know, for years, we were a net exporter of teachers in the state. We're a net importer of teachers at this point. And when you're a net importer, you have to do things that you didn't have to do as a net exporter. Now, it'd be great to get back to being a net exporter, to have a broader marketplace from which to choose from our teachers. But one great place to start are the people who are already in our schools, working successfully with our children every single solitary day. And I might add, to invest in them overall is a lot less expensive than investing scattershot like this, because you're investing in people who are known quantities. Just saying. Ms. Fecto?
I don't know. Terry, I think, it's okay, I recognize, she was, she might have, be able to answer Nikki's question about what other states are doing.
All states are struggling.
And they're considering legislation like what we are?
Yes.
Dr. Kenneth Schnecton, and then back to Ms. Fecto.
So to Kara's point, we have a partnership with the Vanessa's Division. We are doing a small pilot regarding that parapro career ladder with Eastern Michigan University. On that, we have started that process. Again, other states do it, but I think it's something we need to look into.
We were with the EMU, we were with the EMU Dean of School of Education last week. He's just popping with ideas. There's no question. Ms. Fecto, Ms. Ramos Montini.
Lupe, you can go.
Okay.
Ramos Montini, Ms. Fecto.
Okay, there's two things that in West Michigan is being done. One of them, Ferris State has a pilot already, too, for the paraprofessionals. Dr. Tony Baker, who is from my, is a school board member for GRPS, and he's a professor at Ferris State, and he studied this program with the parapros. So that's one way of getting additional people that already know our students. Another thing that GRPS did, they went to Puerto Rico to recruit teachers because there's a lot of teachers that don't have jobs because of Hurricane Maria, and also because of the earthquakes, and because it destroyed a lot of their schools. And so there's a lot of teachers without jobs. So in September, there's going to be, I think they recruited seven, they're gonna start with a pilot program, seven, and they will be assigned. We need a lot of teachers in our area. It's a big shortage, big classroom sizes and all that kind because of this teacher shortage. So those are two things that are, everybody's trying to do something to alleviate the problem because it is a big problem for us.
I do think, just to note, that there's a rising consciousness around the issue of teacher shortage.
Right.
So we're getting fewer people who are denying that this is an issue. That's important because you don't resolve a non-issue, you don't work to resolve a non-issue, you only dig in to resolve what you perceive to be an issue. And as more people acknowledge that it's an issue, more people work to address it. And there's a real value to that. You can see that in myriad ways. Ms. Fecto?
One of the remarks in here that I wanted to mention, and I forgot to mention, was how important in this alternative ed program it is to have adequate oversight, to make sure that these, because, and, you know, people can go in to this, start teaching without any experience in a specialized classroom, and, you know, they just go right in. And so they're making sure that they have the supports, and the schools are so stretched right now, even though a district is supposed to provide those supports, it might not be doable for them to get it. So, and also to make sure that whoever is the provider of this alternative education is doing what they're claiming they will do. And so there was a lot of discussion about one particular provider, a for-profit publicly traded company. People had some serious concerns about them being the main provider of these, of this, and not somebody in-state, an institution that's been here or will be here for a long time. So that's a concern that I think needs to come up. And also, when we say Grow Your Own, looking at even the long-term subs who are there and trying to make sure, I mean, the idea is that they would get loan forgiveness, that they would get some sort of extra incentive to continue in their work if they're able to do the job. And finally, I just wanted to mention, you know, the School for the Deaf, they, I think we really need to look at a Grow Your Own there with the parents or whoever works in those schools, and with that community, and from that community, to become teachers in that community. And I, maybe there have been efforts, and I don't know about it, but I know from my visits out there that it's a hard gig to, I mean, it's hard, they're having a desperate time trying to find teachers that can connect. So I think that that would be a really good spot to try a Grow Your Own in that.
It's a really good point, and that's an example of a subfield of special education, highly specialized, would not be subject to this program of alternative route. Just reflect upon that. We're not talking about every special education certified teacher being subject to this alternative route process, but rather a subset thereof. And we'd have to sift through what that subset would be. Yes, Ms. Dilly, Ms. Ramos Montini.
I think that the parapros is an excellent idea. I want to say, let's not exclude substitute teachers or childcare workers in that, because they are working with those, that population of students as well. And the loan forgiveness on a federal level, I know there's been issues with that. I'm not even sure, from articles I've read, people have not been getting the loan forgiveness even though they have qualified for it and finished the program. So that's something we need to be aware of as well.
And we're gonna dig into that to a greater extent, and because you extended beyond paraprofessionals within support staff to childcare workers and
Substitute teachers.
Substitute teachers. I'll extend to bus drivers, and a shout-out to my former second-grade teacher, Mr. Tony Spencer, who drove for us for 26 years. So don't assume what a person is, given what he or she does, any given day. We're all capable of a lot more.
It's that pygmalion effect that we were talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
I was telling you about.
More for, more on this broad conversation about teacher shortage slash Senate Bill 657.
I just wanted to make an editorial comment, because some people don't know that Puerto Rico belongs to the United States, that they're American citizens, and so, and they speak English. So, you know, I bet you some people say, Puerto Rico, what are they going there for? But, yeah, they're part of the United States.
Okay, thank you very much. I have actually seen examples of what you're saying.
Oh, yeah, I have, too.
Other things on Senate Bill 657, more broadly, the teacher shortage, more broadly still, the Legislative Committee report.
I'd like to say a word to Lupe for this form. I just thank you for doing this, because I think this is an active process that makes sure that everyone's voice gets heard.
Okay. Having said that, I'm going to add just a little bit more to the form because Dr. Pritchett already said, "Erase what you have here as my priorities at this," and she wants us to add what we just discussed. And so if you want your list to be updated, we have touched on yours, and you're satisfied with the outcome, submit new priorities that you might have. If legislation comes up, then we go to your priority list and we formulate the agenda from what your input.
We would like to discuss what the board wants to discuss in this section of the meeting. We only ask that you give us some time to research, share with you that research, so that you come in relatively well-prepared and so that we come in relatively well-prepared as well. Caroline Leith and Stephen DeGraw, Martin Ackley, do a great job in what they do. It is not possible to be fully cognizant of several thousand bills a legislative session. It just isn't. And so to the extent that you can give us a little heads up in advance, Monday, eight days before a Tuesday board meeting, that would help us get you something by Friday before a Tuesday board meeting. You're better informed, we are as well. Thank you.
One more item, educator evaluations?
Well, you, yes. You brought it up during the legislative committee that teachers in Kent County have brought this issue to your attention, and Senator Horn is working on some legislation around this.
Okay. So I'll add it to my form.
Yeah.
And then we can discuss it next time.
Yeah. And we'll see if he, when he, if and when he introduces it, what it entails.
Yes. Okay. That sounds good. Okay. Our next meeting will be on April the 8th, 2020, and it's a Tuesday. And this time, we're going to change the time to 9:00 a.m., to 10:00 p.m., just this one time because there was a conflict.
Nine to 10? 12 hours?
Not 10:00 a.m. No, not, no. Okay, okay. 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. It's going to be longer than our meeting, right? All right. So stay tuned.
Not by much.
Not by much. Okay. Well, I thank Dr. Rice and Marty, Caroline, Stephen, Marilyn, and all of you for a productive meeting. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up. So the last meeting we had, someone just emailed me about the Bill 657, which was moving, and has moved very quickly. So that's why I brought it up in the last meeting and didn't give a heads up. So sometimes, things happen that are unpredictable, and there may be times when we can't give you advance notice, but we need to talk about it.
Yeah, yeah. But still write it on this form, you know, even if we're sitting here, we can do that.
Same day.
But we will try to stay with the agenda. And then if we, if it's possible, we talked about that because there's going to be emergencies sometimes.
And important bills.
So we're flexible, you know? This is our legislative committee, doesn't belong to us. So this is our legislative committee. We just want to set up parameters so we can discuss and we can leave before the rush hour and all those kind of things. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. Are there any board members who wish to offer comments?
If you have not voted yet, please do so.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Tilly?
I spoke to you and Marilyn about a program called Math Hoops.
Yep. And we have a meeting set up with the Math Hoops people. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ramos Montini?
Two things. We talked about Paw Paw changing their mascot, so it's Godfrey Lee. You know, it's catching fire. Godfrey Lee is also changing their mascot. So it's not easy to do it. You know, our friends from the Native American community have come to us for years, right? So finally, it's happening. And then the same thing with Godfrey Lee, the superintendent had, you know, some conflicts. People want to keep their, they don't want the change, but there, it's happening. So there's two identities right now, right there, that are doing something. And also, I want to remind you that on March 31st is the birthday de Cesar Estrada Chavez, our activist, farm labor activist, historical figure in our community. We celebrate his birthday. Hopefully, that issue with coronavirus doesn't impede on our celebration, but we're celebrating on March 19th. I know Judy was with us last year. I say very, and Kyle has been to our event, and I think you're the only two. But it's a very impactful day. We have three events in the span of three hours. We marched, we literally marched down the street, and then, and all kinds of people come, all kinds of people come. And a lot of schools come, and administrators from the city, elected officials, everybody comes out. And then we go to a church, the Potter's House Chapel, and we have a community gathering, literally. And students participate. We're celebrating 20 years. Our main focus is education through scholarships, higher learning, and also community, celebrating the community, getting the community together in behalf of Cesar Chavez's values of commitment, determination, unity, community, and so on. He had many different values. And then we go to a Maya restaurant, and I think the superintendent will concur with me, it's wonderful food. And that event is a fundraising event, the $50 a plate, but it's a really neat networking, community-based unity in the community. I know Kyle has, did you make it to the unity luncheon?
I did not make it to the luncheon, no.
Kyle, you say amen, right? So, you know, we celebrate his birthday, and we celebrate community, and we celebrate education. So in our schools, remember, some of you were with me when we passed the resolution for integrating the life of Cesar Chavez into our social studies curriculum. Remember that? Michelle and I have been here seven-plus months, right? And that happened around at the beginning of our tenure. So anyway, so encourage your schools to incorporate the life of Cesar Chavez's month. It's, I know it's Women's History Month, but we can celebrate more than one group of people. So, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder?
I'd just like to comment this morning, little Anthony down here, who was reading the book, We're All a Wonder, and he talked about how that impacted him in the area of bullying, a reminder not to bully. That's a really great book. If you have an opportunity to read it to kids, just in general in your visits, it's a great book.
Say the book's name again.
We're All a Wonder. It's adapted from the movie Wonder.
Okay. Thank you.
But it just warmed my heart. I have a special person in my life that was born without a right hand, and he typically doesn't wear a prosthetic, and he swings his long sleeve around like this. And I'm frequently saying, "No, no, no, let's roll up your sleeve." And then I realized, like recently, in the last week, I said, "I'd love to see your beautiful arm." And he stopped, and he said, "It's not beautiful to me." And he's only five, so it's very interesting to me what must be happening on the outside for him to say, "It's not beautiful to me," and over time, kind of how that will take form. And it's books like that, it's the cultural changes that we're working towards. It's just all of that that will make, I think, our country more and more beautiful.
Absolutely.
So Anthony warmed my heart this morning.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh?
I'll just say that one of my, someone on social media forwarded me a post of a very out-of-control classroom.
I got it too.
Yeah. It was quite disheartening. I think that the district, I'm thinking that it seems like the community was, is okay with how the district is handling that. But to me, what stood out is just the need for our educators to be adequately trained and driving, we can't drive that home enough. And it centers around bullying, but also just, you know, being able to handle those type of situations with the kids.
Adequately trained and adequately supported?
Yeah, yeah.
Because there are situations that even well-trained people can't handle.
That is true.
Support, respect.
Yeah. And all it takes is for something like that to happen in the whole profession, takes a, yeah, takes a hit for it. And you never can look at something like that and know what the whole story is, but just that our educators really need as much support as they can get, as you've said.
Very much. Anything more for the good of the group? At 3:40 in the afternoon, future meetings are April 14th, May 12th, and June 9th. Those are all regular meetings, all on Tuesday, all at 9:30, all here. There is a State Board of Education work session Wednesday, May 20th, 9:30. And if you have board members, other topics you would like on the agenda, if you would be kind enough to forward those to Marilyn and to me, that would be terrific. During the next week, we're putting together next month's agenda. And I want to thank our American Sign Language interpreters, as tired as we are at the end of the day, we must be terribly tired.
Ooh. Real tired.
We are adjourned at 3:41. Board?
I feel like watching the pandemic.
Okay.
Okay.
You're getting better.
Oh, way better.
You were struggling through conversations.
Where did you use the card? Or are you still on that?
I guess that's one of you two.
Committee.
You were on, when you first joined the board, you were on.
Well, you were appointed to a committee.
Oh, yeah, I'm still on that, but it's Thursday, every other month.
And is that where you are?
MEBC. Uh, yeah, I, hey, it's next to it. It's a great, it's on the other side of Washington.
Okay. So that's not going to give you any help.
I know.
I mean, I was here on time, but I got here at 8:20.
I got here at 8:20.
I'll show you.
I got here at 1:00.
Yeah, yeah.
But what do you think today?